Okay. Yeah, we're now broadcasting.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, I wanted to welcome everyone. I am lucky enough to be out of town and I am sorry for those of you who still don't have power internet. Thank you very much if you're able to get on somehow and listen. And please be assured that this meeting is recorded and will be posted on our website. So I now call to order the Wilton Board of Education Special Meeting. And all our board members are present. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to?
So moved.
All right. Thanks Gretchen. And I didn't hear the second.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks Glenn. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. Now it's time for public comment. Lucille, is there any public comment?
Yes, there are.
And Mark, public comment?
Yes, there are.
Okay. Do you know how many there are?
I have one. Three, four, six.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and read them? And if any come in during the meeting, we can post them or hear them at the end. So, okay, and just so everyone knows, any Board of Ed meeting, there is public comment, but the Board of Ed never responds. We listen and there's follow up on an individual basis if that's necessary. Okay, so go ahead, Lucille.
Okay, the comment is from Matt Pruskenis and Nicole K. Nicole K. and I, as town residents and parents of incoming fifth grader Charlton Pruskenis, I'm sorry, wanted to voice our support for consistently supported at home learning option paralleling the in school curriculum for those who choose to take that. For those who choose to take that route at any time during the school year. Thank you, Matt and Nicole, 37 Holda Hill Road. The next public comment is from Ryan Bendel, from the email of Ryan Bendel. My name is Jennifer Bendel and I'm a board certified family medicine physician practicing in Stanford, Connecticut. In addition to my office based practice, I work as a hospitalist covering inpatient admissions to Stanford Hospital, many of whom are afflicted by COVID-19. I order confirmatory and antibody based COVID testing and participate in the CT Department of Health online reporting. I serve as a professor to Columbia School of Medicine students and hold a faculty appointment at the Neder School of Medicine in Hampton. I'm also a mom of four, three of whom will be attending public school this fall. After reading the proposals for reentry guidelines, I question the school board's intention for pursuing this hybrid model of kids going to school for only two days per week. While it is important to consider community spread and encourage social distancing, hand washing, we know that kids, especially elementary students, simply don't get seriously ill from COVID-19. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC encourage in-person school as long as there is little incidents in the community. This is not an opinion, but an academy recommendation similar to vaccine and car seat guidelines. The only reason to limit school in Wilton at this point would be to confer some herd immunity and protect elderly immune compromised. Not to protect the students because this virus does not cause any severe illness in kids. I am concerned that the board is not considering how losing so many months of school will negatively impact students from not only an educational standpoint, but from an equally important social and emotional one. Kids need to go to school in person. A screen based experience is not comfortable and I fear the long term effects of this. One of my many suggestions would be to provide students and their families with an opt out. If a particular student or teacher with medical risk factors doesn't want to attend in-person school, they can spend the year engaged in a virtual learning curriculum. However, for those children who will wear masks, socially distance, stay home when sick without immune compromise or elderly caregivers at home, forcing them engaged in an online curriculum for an indefinite amount of time is unwise, unfair, and not based on any current medical guidelines. Sincerely, Jennifer Bendel. The next is from Mrs. Lewis. To begin with, I want to be clear that I would like nothing more than to begin this year, like last year, in the classroom with my students engaged in collaborative scientific inquiries and investigations. While the district's plan as it stands, stands attempts to get us back in the classroom, I believe there are too many unaddressed issues to vote for it at present. Specifically, it is too high level and lacking in detail in both implementation and cost and doesn't address negative outcomes that we have already begun to see around the country. In regard to the lack of detail of the current reopening plan, the plan that was presented on July 30th, as of 10:00 AM on July 10th, more detailed plans have not been released for public viewing. Only barely begin to identify the myriad of details of how classroom teaching could be implemented in either option scenario involving any in-person instruction. Without having significantly more details of a plan laid out and clarified beyond the generalizations currently made, we cannot begin to understand the risk reward comparison that the BOE is tasked with making. In regard to the cost to the district, the cost to the district in order to implement an effective hybrid approach to learning will be monumental without any chance, in my opinion, of coming close to the standard of education that we've brought ourselves in upholding. These costs include both personnel needs mentioned last week as well as technology needs to teach simultaneous remote and in-person lessons. Neither of these needs has been addressed in detail and I believe the current proposal lacks both a large amount of physical hardware and an allotment of sufficient training of staff and students to utilize the technology. Also not detailed in the plan is the additional time needed after adequately retrofitting individual classrooms to test the new systems for inevitable issues that will require workarounds prior to implementing lessons to the students. I can only speak for every classroom at WHS, all of which have a different set of needs and obstacles, given the non-uniform layout of items like barboards, computer docking, microphones, extra monitors, et cetera. In regard to social emotional needs, the discussion around the mental wellbeing of students and teachers in any in-person scenario has not been addressed. The stress of attempting to learn or work in an environment where you must be fearful of every person around you, nor has the discussion focused on the stigma, guilt, and possible permanent psychological damage borne by the individuals who inadvertently bring the virus into the school and sicken or potentially cause the death of a peer or teacher. This is a burden that we cannot and should not ask anyone to bear. Given the issues mentioned, my plea to the BOE is as follows. Remote learning is an extraordinarily difficult task for teachers, students, and the community. But I argue it is the only option we can safely pursue in this early phase of scientific understanding of COVID-19. Let the schools return initially in a remote setting until we have a viable plan that allows us to be safe while still providing the excellent education that we want to continue to give. I love my WHS family. Please let me keep them safe. Sarah Lewis. This, the next comment is Mandy Mullany, 999 Mitchfield Road. If someone in my child's class has positive for COVID, will my child need to self quarantine for 14 days? Will my other two children in different classes also have to self quarantine along with myself and husband? The next comment is from the same person. It was just a second email. Based on all Dr. Smith's previous comments about Schoology streaming live from the classroom for those hybrid home e-learners, it seems like he is now backpedaling and saying it will be up to the teachers and schools. This is listed several times in the document sent to parents. So if my child gets a teacher who is not comfortable with being on camera, will they be receiving busy work or pre-recorded lessons with no direct instructions for three days a week while at home? I am hoping that the three days of at-home learning doesn't reflect what happened March through June. Teachers should be required to provide as much direct instruction as possible to keep kids engaged. Based on the possibility that some teachers may not be delivering enough live instruction on the students' three home days because they are not comfortable on camera, can the district provide a more detailed class syllabus lesson plan so that parents can supplement the direct instruction piece that will be missing from the classroom teacher? That said, live streaming does not equate to an understanding that cameras will be on in classrooms all the time. Schools and teachers will make appropriate decisions on how best to integrate remote learning. I'm sorry, excuse me. The next, this is the last public comment. It's from Suzanne Farrell Smith. Hello, I support the hybrid model. I support whatever model you think best. We are ready to roll with the plan. I am growing concerned about the number of families arranging small learning pods for their, for the days their children are at home. On the surface, a great idea, but so far it seems the pods are being created for kids in the same grade, not in the same class. I got excited about it when someone mentioned a pod for kids in K and 2, which I have as well. But then I thought, wait, my boys will be in, my boys will be with their class cohort two days a week and then with kids from other classes the other days. That seems to expand exposure exponentially. I have no idea what can be done about this, but perhaps the schools can suggest that families who wish to create small learning pods for their children try to create from within the class cohort. Thank you for everything as always. Suzanne Farrell Smith, Wilton, Connecticut. That, that, that will do it for the public comments.
Okay, thank you, Lucille, for reading those. I want you, anyone listening, to realize that our board, as Board of Ed members, we read all the emails that also go to either the Board of Ed or the input emails. So all of us have read all of them. We recognize the serious tone that everybody takes. We know there are lots of real challenges and real worries. But as a Board of Ed, it's our responsibility to move forward. And so as we, as you listen to our discussions tonight and perhaps eventual decisions, we're not going to necessarily please anyone. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure we're not going to please everyone. But with that said, I want to plunge right into our agenda. It's a single item. It is to look at the Board of Ed reopening goals and the superintendent recommendations for reentry plans. So with that, let's get started. Kevin, could you, if, if you're able, share your screen and put up the Board of Ed goals? Thank you. Okay, so the Board of Ed, we listened to all the meetings, obviously, all the reopenings, everybody's input. We reviewed all the literature that we could find, looked at the State Department's recommendations, et cetera. So here's a draft that we're proposing as our goals and we will discuss them tonight. I will not read them word for word, but I do want the public to get a sense of where we're coming from in terms of what we're going to be expecting this year. We anticipate that we may not stay with just one model. So it's important that this reopening goal stand for the year. So the first thing, the first point is that we, as a board, are going to look at current health data from all sorts of different sources in helping determine which model to move on. Also, we will absolutely consider input from staff, teachers, and families, but with the understanding that the current health data and medical research will be prevailing. Third, that we're going to determine which model to use on a school by school basis. And this allows a decision at each school level that is going to match the health and safety needs with the school by school assessment of which mitigation strategies are going to fit. The superintendent will recommend a model for each school that will be reviewed, discussed, and voted on by the Board of Education. He will make those review, those recommendations to us every three weeks, at least during the early part of the year. And again, we're looking at it at a school by school basis. And a little bit of a spoiler alert, the medical research, at least as of this date, seems to indicate that K-5 students transmit less and are susceptible less to COVID. So they may end up at a full open at an earlier time than the middle or the high school. We are, our goal obviously is to implement many mitigation strategies. We've received lots of questions that are very much, you know, specifics, which we appreciate. And also encourage everyone to look at the district plans that were submitted to the State Department of Education on July 24th. There's lots of details there and those details that are missing are being worked on as we speak. There are some items that are not yet determined. There are some items that perhaps, you know, if you go in and you find, and you will find your, the answer to your question. I know the superintendent's also working on a frequently asked, an FAQ document to post. If we use the hybrid model, it will involve cohorts of students. And as a district, we'll work to ensure to the best extent possible that siblings will be in the same cohort group. And this part I am going to read out loud because this is where the, the will of all of us has to sort of focus on the kids. And I know it does, but this is a reminder. So I'm just going to read this to you. The COVID pandemic has necessitated development of new and as yet untested models for school reopening. The success of this year's new models, all of them, rests on the commitment, the skills, and the attitudes of the teachers, the staff, and the families. Thoughtful and careful planning has brought us to this point. Moving forward requires willingness to innovate and take instructional risks together, flexibility to adapt in a very fluid environment, shared responsibility, and support for one another. Moving forward absolutely requires sacrifice of some of our old former habits and practices. But I urge us that, the board urges that we resolve to build for the time ahead, remembering that our students get one chance at each. The next point that we're making as boards is our goal is that the curriculum standards are going to remain in effect. There are a couple of points to make. One is that when students do return, there will be some reentry units in order to help with the transition from last spring. And students will be assessed to figure out where they stand and if, and how much intervention they may need. We also recognize that students have been challenged during this pandemic and certainly last year, and they will be this year because they will be learning perhaps in multiple settings. So it's more important to tend to their social emotional needs. We have excellent staff and support teams at each building. And I'll get into the next thing, which in the hybrid and the remote only models. And it may be for some students even during the, the in-person learning. They may have to be at home for some reason or another. So what we're trying to do is teachers and staff make sure that they're provided with the tools and the training. And that families understand their role is to support their children by helping them gain access to the tools and have, helping them stay focused online. And at the same time, understand that there are very important classroom boundaries and that families, parents do not insert themselves or intrude into the classroom. The classroom is a special magical place between students and teachers and we need to respect those boundaries. Recording of classrooms is prohibited. Students working remotely, Dr. Smith will show us the schedules. It's going to follow close to what's going on onsite. We talked a lot about this learning platform, form Schoology, which enables easy access. Zoom is embedded in it. And in the midst of all of this, in terms of hybrid, our goal is that live streaming is a cornerstone of remote learning and will be used. That said, live streaming does not equate to the cameras will be in on the, will be on all the time in all the classrooms. Students and teachers will make appropriate decisions about how best to integrate remote students, or remote students. But having said that, live streaming is a cornerstone and integral part central to the success of remote learning. Therefore, we've got to look at our, our technology acceptable use policies. They're going to be updated to reflect the fact that now students are working at home and that families need to protect and respect the classroom boundaries. We expect that those policies will be signed as usual by students and parents, but with the additional language. There'll be orientation sessions and expectations for remote learning so that these boundaries are very clear. And again, although live streaming is the cornerstone, it's not the sole strategy. Teachers will determine the mix of strategies based on the lesson objectives and student needs. So as a Board of Ed, we're promising that we will provide oversight and monitoring as to how the implementation is going. We'll be discussing and voting on the reopening models every three weeks, at least at the beginning of the year. We will approve the resources to implement these plans to the greatest extent possible without going crazy. For instance, we are not putting bus monitors on every bus. Costs a million dollars and that has no benefit that's worth a million dollars. But to the extent, greatest extent possible and reasonable, we absolutely understand that some of our resources are critical and we will do our best to get those. We also want to ensure that there's adequate planning and training time for teachers. This is critical. Many of you are well aware that the superintendent has recommended front loading the beginning of the year so that there is more planning and training time for that purpose. We will adopt policies as needed to support the three models. I can think, for example, that we will at least need policies around mask wearing. We will support the faculty members in their use of live streaming and other innovative and new strategies that they have not used that much before. And in the, hopefully, this is only hypothetical, event that students or families violate technology acceptable use agreements. We will be supporting the faculty members in those, I hope, rare and nonexistent situations. Obviously, we will communicate on a regular basis with families and staff. We will keep seeking your input and we're ensuring as much transparency during our board meetings and discussions as possible. We thank everybody for your patience with this platform, especially during a power outage. But judging by the numbers of 500, 600 participants tonight, you all have made a wonderful effort to, to be part of this. So I thank you for listening and I'm sorry to the board members because they have seen this document quite a bit. But I wanted to make sure that we went out and said this, these are the, sort of the umbrella principles that we're going to be operating by this year. So having said that, I'm going to ask board members if they have any comments or questions before I will ask for a motion to approve.
Deb, if I may, it's Ruth. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
I just want to say that I support the document in its entirety. And given the unprecedented and uncharted, you know, times that we find ourselves in, I just want to make clear and that these are expectations, that they're not aspirational in the sense of looking to possibly achieve these as goals. So as a clarifying, clarifying point, I thought it might be helpful for people as they approach the document to change the title from goals to expectations. And, and that, you know, within the expectations, we will certainly be creative and flexible. But that this is, these are pivotal starting points.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, either building on Ruth or other comments that any board member wants to make? Okay. Is there support, I do have to ask, is there support for Ruth's word change? Or are we, you know, just, what's your thought about that? Should we change goals to expectations or leave it as is?
Yeah, I don't think it matters really, goals, expectations. We know what we're going to do. That's what we're going, and we've spelled out very clearly what our objectives are and what our desires are. So either way, goals, expectations, I can go either way.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's goals and hopefully we will achieve them. But, you know, there is unprecedented time, but I'd like to leave the word goals.
Okay. All right. So let's leave the word goals and, but Ruth's point is well taken that some of those practices and those wording there is, they really are the Board of Ed's expectations that we, you know, hope, hope will come to fruition and with our talented staff and our families, I think with the right attitudes, that it's, it's all possible. And I don't mean to sound like Pollyanna, even though I do. So, so anyway, is there a motion to approve the Board of Ed reopening goals?
So moved.
Thanks Glenn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Gretchen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, is it, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, Kevin, that leads us to part B, which is talking about your recommendations for the first three weeks of reentry to school and what your recommendations are. I do want to, just because I'm cognizant of how many people are on tonight, I do want to say that tonight's conversation, I think someone tried to perhaps say it earlier. It may be a little broad tonight, but the follow up is that each school is hosting parent forums. And that will get into the very detailed specifics, et cetera, that reflect each building. So tonight Kevin will give us a great overview and a taste of what it will look like. But very, you know, specific to those school questions will be addressed in the forums. All right, Kevin, I'm sorry I've taken up too much of your airtime.
Not at all. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I really am pleased to see so many people logging in to watch this meeting tonight. So as you know, and I wrote to you and wrote to the community last week, my recommendation to the Board of Education is that we open all of our schools and all of our grades pre-grade 12 in a hybrid. And so just to retrace a couple of steps, as you know, back at the end of the June, the State Department of Education required that all boards submit plans, three separate plans. One for a return to school that allowed for all students to participate full time. A second for this hybrid plan, which is essentially half the students in session at one time and the other half participating remotely. And then the third plan is for full remote participation on behalf of all students. Tonight, my recommendation is that we open all of our schools in a hybrid and that we do that for a period of about three weeks. And then we monitor both the, you know, ongoing COVID community transmission rates that are going to be provided to us by the Department of Public Health. As well, we monitor our own implementation of our mitigation strategies. So as you've seen in the original plan and as we've discussed over the last month or more, we are preparing to implement a range of strategies. In the full reopening plan, we were not able to achieve six feet of social distance between students. We were able to achieve in the front of the classroom, six feet between the teacher workstation and the student workstation. But because of so many students returning, we couldn't achieve six feet. In the hybrid plan, we are able to achieve six feet of social distance in our classrooms between each student. And so part of the rationale of my recommendation here is number one, and probably most importantly, we are entering a time and we're being asked to educate in ways that we just have never pursued before. And so I think it's really important that we take the opportunity to start slow, to continue to think through our decisions, bring kids back in smaller groups, and then enable ourselves the time to test and refine, if necessary, our various mitigation strategies. At the end of that initial three week period, we can review the data we have and we can make a subsequent decision to either, or I can make a subsequent recommendation to you rather, to continue or to modify the current plan. So I'd like to take a few minutes and just walk you through, you know, what I'm hoping to accomplish. So I'd like to take a few minutes and just walk you through, you know, what I'm hoping to accomplish with hybrid.
Hey Kevin, it's Mandy. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mandy.
So if in three weeks, if we cannot accommodate kids being six feet away. What will change in the first week? So we're just hoping that data has changed. Can you not hear me?
No, no, I didn't. I didn't follow. No.
So when school first opens, we can't accommodate kids being six feet away from each other in a live setting? When we check in in three weeks, how will that change if we're hoping to go back?
Right. If we're having all students back, Mandy, in the classroom at the same time, we can't. That's not going to change. You know, so that in in looking at all of our list of mitigation strategies. You know, in the hybrid is really if we're going to have students back, it's the hybrid model that really only allows us to achieve that six feet of social distance between student workstations. I think, you know, there's so many questions and so many unknowns about all of the various mitigation strategies, mask wearing, hand sanitizing, et cetera. I think those are, you know, the ones that we can also continue to focus on. It'll enable our instructional staff and support staff to establish and reinforce the routines. We will have set up lots of signage through the hallways to help, you know, keep kids social distance. We'll have a sense of what lunch looks like in the classrooms. We'll have worked out mask breaks and things like that. So I think when we look at the whole menu of strategies. You know, I imagine we'll get some really good feedback, learn a lot and then, you know, be able to refine and improve on some of the other ones. But to your, you know, six feet is not achievable when all kids are in the classroom.
But, but just to confirm that the hybrid model for day one does allow for the six feet.
That's correct because we have half the students in person and half the students participating remotely.
But Kevin, if we're looking to change that in three weeks.
Yeah.
How does that then work? Like at some point, if you can get everyone back into school, we're not going to be able to get that six feet.
We, no, we're going to have to, I mean, the, the decision we're going to have to make is that. You know, we, we will be able to ensure three feet, but not six feet.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Perfect.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good, it's an important question. And I think the, you know, we've been paying very close attention to the guidance that's been offered by the CDC as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics. And, you know, and that's why those organizations propose a range of mitigation.
So Kevin, if I can just clarify, because I'm sure you'll probably be walking us through it. Where you're going to have a strategy around benchmarks or other types of tools to be able to measure adherence to the other mitigation strategies. So we'll have like a sense of how successful those are being. So knowing that if they're, you know, really operationally successful. And the community transmission numbers and positivity rates and things like that have, have held stable. You know, the question will be then, especially maybe with the under tens, to look to then going to a full open with those strategies in place and at, you know, three to six feet.
That's right. So well, I mean, well, you know, I'm imagining, you know, simple checklist and surveys from teachers where we can just gather feedback, you know, student by student on that range of strategies.
Well, yeah, to clarify, if I may. You're clearly, there isn't a classroom in our school system or probably in any school system that would accommodate a full class of students six feet socially distanced. Any school I've ever been in, that just is, it is not going to happen. It's Darian, you Kane and us, or whatever. The classrooms are not that large. So I think the question Mandy was trying to get at, as I am now. What? What's magic about three weeks? So it was at the end of three weeks, what decisions could we possibly make? That are, that we change how we're starting? Or the, I would think on the downside, the negative decision is we got problems and we're going for remote.
Right.
It will not be in any case that we're going to go full in for grade C through five. Because we can't do the six, six feet is an impossible thing to achieve.
I think, yeah, Glenn, I, I think we probably need to let Kevin get through his overview. But I hear your point and I think we, as board members, let's remember that there's more than one mitigation strategy going on.
No, absolutely.
You know, is it sufficient? Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so Kevin, go ahead and we will probably ask the question again at the end. But if you could emphasize that social distancing is a piece of the puzzle.
Social distancing is one piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so. Let me set this up here. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through. Again, some ideas guiding our work. And so first, in this model, in all of our models, we're attempting to provide continuity of learning. And so as we've been planning, we are thinking very hard about the movement of students from, you know, students who may opt in to full remote initially and then being back in person. And then students who may be, you know, in person but have to quarantine. And so that's why the instructional strategy we're proposing with Schoology and live streaming is so important. Because we think it gives us the most flexibility in supporting those students to move between environments. But in general, our overall goals around continuity of learning are to provide clear, attainable, measured learning objectives. Design lessons that are accessible to kids who are onsite and kids who are using both low tech and online resources. We're certainly going to be creating assessments so we can understand where kids are to begin with. But then also in response to instruction, to make sure that they're meeting standards. Assignments will be created that enables student choice. Assignments will build opportunities for student practice and their enrichment of skills. And then we'll provide opportunities for student discourse with students onsite and students online to deepen the learning. Second guiding principle is, again, not news to anybody, you know, we're continuing to emphasize this building of a community of learners. So we want to build connections both within the classroom, but also across the classroom with those students who are participating remotely. And then we want to build a community of learners that are adept at using the various tools and resources that we provide to them in this highly unusual environment. We'll continue to empower students to solve learning problems. And then provide students with opportunities to create, curate and share learning experiences and resources. As well, provide a feedback mechanism for students. And then, you know, the third broad guiding principle is really to enable students to make connections beyond the classroom. So to provide opportunities for collaborative projects that transcend the physical classroom that include online students. On site as well as students from other places. So in a nutshell, a hybrid. In a hybrid model, students will attend school in one of two cohorts. And I recognize that over the last several weeks, we are using the term cohort in a variety of ways. And you'll see kind of through this presentation and in, in the building plans as well, we refer to cohorts in a variety of ways. But broadly, students will attend school in person in one of two cohorts to minimize the number of students in the building at any one time and to allow for six feet of social distancing. Cohort A will attend Monday, Tuesday. Cohort B will attend Thursday, Friday. All students will participate in remote learning Wednesdays on a shortened day schedule. And as you know, we have some students who will likely opt to participate fully remotely. The onsite and remote learning days, so that's Monday, Tuesday, then Thursday, Friday, will follow a typical day of school. Will, you know, take care to ensure that instructional time is balanced between on and off screen activities. And then, as we've talked about quite a bit, when kids are at home, they will absolutely have opportunities for direct live instruction from their classroom teachers. In addition to that, they'll also, as they do in class, have access to independent learning activities that support the direct instruction. And then siblings across the district will be assigned to the same cohort to support families. So at Miller Driscoll, students will attend in two cohorts. Teachers will work in teams to manage both the in-person and remote learning. Here, class sizes will remain the same. So one difference between Miller Driscoll and the other three schools is rather than split an individual class. Mrs. Kuhn and her team has proposed that we split a grade level. She's identified a number of classrooms and other larger spaces in the school that will allow an entire class to attend and participate in person while maintaining six feet of social distance between the student workstations. Additionally, Mrs. Kuhn has proposed that they reorganize classes by alpha. So that way, students are assigned to the same cohort as older siblings in the upper schools. So you can see in this model, Monday and Tuesday, Cohort A would participate in person. Wednesday is a remote learning day for both cohorts and then Thursday, Friday. Cohort B would attend in person and Cohort A would attend online. So some of the benefits of this proposal include students having the same teacher, whether they're in school or at home. In some cases, if they're fully remote learning, it'll be two teachers. Given that we have enough large spaces, we can maintain class size and then, you know, foster that community connection across students within a class. And the teachers would be paired to enable the short-term remote learning for students who need their quarantine.
So Kevin, so I understand that Cohort A could be in fact, well, go ahead now. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so just, just so you can see the, the schedule here. This very much mirrors a typical day. So students will arrive, they'll have their morning meeting and then they'll proceed through reading, a special math. They'll have recess and lunch, writing, they'll have an additional special and then they'll grab the day with phonics and then dismissed. And so whether you are in school or you are participating remotely, that will be your schedule in this model.
Well, can we hold there? Back to Miller Driscoll, because I'm a little confused. From what you said, what it leads me to think is that Cohort A is first grade, Cohort B would be second grade.
No. Half the number of classes on any particular grade attending. And if you like, Kathy is on the call, so I can ask her if she wants to elaborate a little bit.
So again, like Kevin said, ours is a little different because we have full classes coming in. So because you all gave us this amazing, beautiful new building. We identified some alternative, large learning spaces and then I make a chart out of everything. So we have a chart for every classroom and square footage of every classroom. So we went into our largest classrooms and we were able to arrange the desks to be six feet apart. We were able to get teachers six feet of space in the front of the classroom to provide instruction. And we were able to provide six feet of space around the, the sink and the doorway. So given that, we can bring in a full class and like Kevin said, we would partner two teachers. So one of whom would teach in person on Monday, Tuesday. The other would teach in person on Thursday, Friday. And if there were students who needed to be remote from their assigned homeroom class. They would be with the, with the teacher who is teaching remotely if their class was in person. The other thing that we want to do, the, the biggest part of this plan for our teachers and for our students is like Janine mentioned, I think about a week and a half ago, when you talked about this plan. It would be very, very difficult with our youngest learners for a teacher to provide in-person instruction and then be live streaming with kids who were accessing things remotely. So with this plan, the teacher will either do live in-person instruction or all remote instruction. So we think that that, you know, that's going to provide the best, the best around instruction for all of our kiddos.
Okay.
Kathy, question? So then on your remote day, you and your class are all remote. So where is your teacher streaming from?
We actually, so here's the, here's the other thing on my big chart. So thanks for asking, Ruth. We identified large instructional spaces that will be shared between two teachers. But then every teacher will also have a remote space because we wanted, we want to be sure that if in three weeks, you decide all the Miller Driscoll kids can come back in person, that we would also be ready to do that. So every teacher will have an instructional space and that will be shared. And then they will have a remote space that will be a classroom space with materials and things that they will teach from remotely.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Makes sense?
Okay.
Great. Okay, so moving on to, moving on to Cedar Mill. So here, in a hybrid model, Dr. Falcone has organized teachers into grade level teams. And so students will about approximately 65 students or so will be assigned to a three teacher grade level team. There may be some teams that have four teachers and 85 students to take. So the teachers will operate in teams. Each student will also be assigned to one teacher on the team who will serve as their designated team-based teacher. So on in-person days. The students will be assigned to their in-person teacher. And then on remote days. The students will be split up among the three teachers. And then the third teacher for students who are in person will facilitate some of the remote learning. So will act as a support to the two teachers who are providing live instruction. So no change here. Students will attend school onsite two times a week. Across the district, we are looking to organize kids by alpha and we have the split right now as A do about L E and then L I does Z. And then we'll, you know, continue to refine that as we work through the sibling list that we have. Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday, students follow a traditional schedule, whether their cohort is onsite or learning remotely. And then Wednesday morning, students in both cohorts will work remotely and follow a typical shortened day schedule. Wednesday afternoons, that will be reserved for teachers to meet in their IT meetings, to plan for instruction and to engage in professional learning. So just another example provided by Dr. Falcone. Jen, do you want to offer any other comments about your hybrid proposal?
Nope, just we're trying to optimize the team structure that we've spent a lot of time building over the last few years to really reach both the onsite and the remote learners without needing additional staff. This, the structure really allows us to do that. It is important to note that with the assignment to a team, the students will also be assigned a, you know, kind of the way middle school. They're assigned a team-based teacher so that if at any time, we can revert back to a Plan A. The, the team-based teacher would become their homeroom teacher. And so that transition would be smooth back forth between Plan A and Plan B. It'll also help, you know, if staff go out to provide continuity and consistency for our kids. So we're really excited about the model and think it provides a creative solution.
Hey Jen, it's Mandy. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
This looks awesome. Thank you. And as putting on my parent hat, will parents be expecting then a assignment to a teacher? Or will be parents expecting an assignment to the three teachers?
So they're going to be expecting an assignment to three teachers, but an assignment to, an additional assignment to a team-based teacher. Because we want the live Zoom for, say, we want to include the kids at, at home. we want to include the kids at home, learning remotely, in the onsite learning. We want one Zoom class. So to be able to do that, I need to be able to create a, the way Power School and Schoology are working, it's a little complicated. So we will have one team classroom created and the three teachers will be co-teachers.
Got it.
If we revert to Plan A, we will simply pull those apart and assign them to their own classes again. It's really more a computer issue, not a, not a teacher.
Functional, yeah. So if I'm a Cider Mill, if I'm a Cider Mill parent, I will get the three teachers and then my team-based teacher. And will I also get a class list so that my student can see who they're in school with on the day?
You'll have like about, if you're on a team of three, about 65. But then you'll also have a list of who's in the team base. Because we're adjusting our schedule a little bit. We're taking like five minutes here and five minutes here so that we can have morning meeting and closing circle. So that depending on, there'll be morning meeting or closing circle, depending on how the teachers want to do it. One will be with the team base and one will be with the whole team. So that we're building community both ways.
Got it.
Great. Thanks, Jen. So at Middlebrook, again, similar. Students within a grade level are divided into two cohorts. Cohort A is Monday, Tuesday, following the same. Alpha segregation, cohort B is Thursday, Friday. Whether in-person or at home, students will follow a fairly regular a-period day. So you can see, they start the day with a few minutes in team base and then move right into their learning blocks, whether it's an academic or a stride block. And then they work through, they work through their full day. Lauren has built into this calendar two 10-minute mask breaks on team is part of their daily schedule. So that does eat into some of the instructional time. But as we know, those are going to be very important to take advantage of. Wednesdays, just like for Miller Driscoll and Cider Mill are shortened. And so you'll see we have 27-minute classes on those days that the kids work through their entire day. And then the school day ends at 12:30. The, let me stop there just for a second since we had other questions. It's hard, I can't see anybody, so I don't know if there are questions or not. Are there questions for Middlebrook? We'll move forward. The high school follows a similar pattern as Middlebrook. Again, students divided into two cohorts, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, by alpha. They will follow their regular block schedule, whether they're in person or they're at home. Wednesdays are learned to as personalized learning days. And so after they work through a number of 45-minute blocks, they'll have advisory and then lunch at home. And then the teachers will be engaging in what Dr. O'Donnell's referring to as personalized learning days. And so the time in this afternoon is being dedicated to provide follow-on support to students, to follow-up on parent communications, maybe time for ITs or planning as well, possibly some professional learning. Great. So that's an overview of our grid proposal.
I'm sorry, wait, Kevin, can I ask, did I miss something? We did Cider Mill and we just did the high school?
Yeah, Middlebrook in between.
In between, okay, I did, okay. So they had something, I just, they had something in there about, you know, going, moving to a different schedule if they're home for more than two days. So I just, yeah.
So the, so that's the, you know, we were talking about in our couple of previous meetings, you know, per the State Department of Ed, Plan A and B, Plan C. And so I know the nomenclature gets all fuzzy, but Plan A would be the plan where all kids are back, you know, full-time, in person. Plan is what we've just been discussing tonight. And then Plan C is the plan for full remote learning. And so in the Middlebrook plan, Lauren had included a schedule because the thinking at the middle school was that if they were going to, if we were going to be in a, where we were for many days and participating in full remote learning, I lock schedule. And so that's what is referenced in that plan. And so I think what we'll do, we'll come back at one of our subsequent meetings and we'll review the details for all of the remote learning plans.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of clarify the bifurcation of the two because it just got a little, you know, a little confusing if they were like integrating or working together in some way. So I just, thank you.
So, you know, as I started with, and as Debbie had also made mention and is written in your document, we are, you know, we're treading a new territory here. And there is, while I think we have many good assumptions and many very, very good and thoughtful plans in place, we are going to be learning from the first minute that students and teachers arrive. And so we're expecting to refine. And so I think coming back to this idea of a hybrid for all, for at least the first three weeks to start, as we assess our mitigation strategies, continue to watch the transmission rates locally and across the state, I think we'll be well-positioned to make follow-on recommendations as we move more deeply into September.
Can I ask just one more question? This hybrid strategy is also, the majority of the teachers are more comfortable with this versus inline learning or, or fully external?
Yeah, you know, we didn't survey teachers about what their preference would be. And so I would be very hesitant to suggest, you know, where they all are. Because I do think it's a, it's a range across the district.
What about, what about start times? Are we changing the start times to adequately have not all kids coming to school at the same time?
We're not changing the start times per se, but within the kind of regular start of school, we are staggering arrivals. And so, you know, kind of through each of those schedules, there is a reflection that it's going to take a little bit longer each day to get kids in the building and all the kids out of the building. Because even in a hybrid, you know, we still have to social distance and spread kids out as they're getting into the classrooms. So I think things are a little bit more slowly.
So as a parent, would you get a, this is the time you would like to have your kid dropped off? Or how would that work?
That's embedded in the plans produced by each of the buildings. I think at least half of them had those initially. And if they don't, the principals will certainly follow up with that information.
Got it.
But they'll be very close to someone to the existing start times that we've historically had, correct?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the, we're not changing the school starts. So, you know, if, you know, Cider Mill starts at 7:40, you know, kids may not actually be in class right at 7:40. We're trying to accommodate just the movement.
Kevin, what is the, have we gotten clarity or a change in position from the state regarding the remote learning days, not counting to the 180?
Yes, correct. So when the governor announced a couple of weeks ago that districts would be able to elect whether they wanted to, what model they wanted to start in, and just note that, I'll come back and clarify that a little further. On a follow-up call with the commissioner, he did acknowledge that if we were starting in a hybrid, students who are at home, and even though students who are opting to participate fully remotely, certainly would have their, those days counted.
Okay, great. That's because I hadn't seen that, I hadn't seen that change. So that was, because I was giving an eye out, but I hadn't seen that documented anywhere.
No, shared by the commissioner. And then shortly after that meeting, there was, I think it was labeled Addendum 4. It was an addendum to the Connecticut's plans. And so in that, they clarified that districts, if, if community transmission rates are low and they set up a, then could opt for some in-person, whether it was full in-person or part in-person.
Yeah, that I saw, yeah.
Right. They also, in that addendum, took, made a point to note that if a district elected to start fully remotely, even though the, the community transmission rates were in that low to moderate range, they would, that district would have to apply to, apply for a waiver. And apparently there is a panel that is being formed or has been formed that contains representatives from the State Department of Education, State Board of Education as well, the State Department of Health. And that panel would have to approve a district's plan to open fully remotely.
All right, but if we're doing a hybrid plan, even though our existing rates are in the low level, we're going to be okay?
We're fine.
Okay, good. All right, thanks.
I've got a few questions. First one being, on our first three half-days, where our entire grade goes in, are we just splitting them up? Each class has half of it in one class and the other half goes to another class just for that day? Figuring that out?
Yeah, so we've been talking about that because obviously if we are proposing a hybrid, then we need to adjust. And so right now, what the, the proposal from the administrators is, is to have cohort A come on Wednesday for a shortened day. And then cohort B would come on Friday for a shortened day.
Okay. One of my other questions is, have we ever given any thought to some of our teachers who would be willing to be in a building with a full class? Would we ever consider that?
I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't hear the question. Can you, would you mind just repeating it?
Sure. Would, have we ever considered teachers that would be willing to be in a class full-time? And have an entire class with them? Would that ever be a possibility?
So just so I understand, if a teacher, an individual, comes in. I, I think we would make decisions minimally at the school level. And so I can't imagine a scenario where there would be one teacher, one class in, but everybody else would be in that building, would be in a hybrid.
I guess I'm asking the question mainly because there are, have been a number of emails or personal comments and personal emails or whatnot about how difficult a hybrid model is for working parents, for children who don't learn well when they're at home. And I'm trying to figure out what, I'm a little concerned that we are making our next determinations three weeks later and that it's going to be more of a subjective decision than an objective decision and that we're going to postpone that decision for three more weeks. And for parents, it's a really difficult place for a lot of people.
Yeah, I don't have a good answer to that concern. You know, we've spent a lot of time certainly hearing all the feedback that you've received as well and thinking through how to manage the incredible number of logistics and concerns. And, you know, they run the gamut. And so I think, you know, the commitment that I would make to you tonight is, we try to be as data-based as possible in our decisions. We, at least I, I'll speak only for myself here. I think it's prudent that we start in a hybrid simply because it is brand-new and for many, a lot of fear and uncertainty. And I think once we are able to get school open and up and running, we'll, we'll learn some things. And my hope is it'll go brilliantly. And a lot of that fear and trepidation, you know, may subside. But I think, you know, we have to commit to just gathering feedback from our families and our students and our teachers and, I bet.
Well, and our board goals, we did say that the medical and research evidence, you know, would take precedence. And it will. I, I think that starting in a hybrid, if you remember how, we all do, how the state opened up, they kind of did it in phases. So I think that this is a fair approach, even though the data argues that our students under 10 are probably, you know, at this point anyway, in terms of research, are less susceptible and in terms of their susceptibility to COVID. But the state opened up in phases. So I think a three-week window may not be ideal, but I think it's reasonable. It allows everybody to kind of see if our mitigation strategies, and they are multiple, whether the mask-wearing works, whether it's enforceable, how the remote learning tools work, how lunch is going to work, get the kids used to the routine and the teachers used to the routine before maybe bringing everybody onsite. So that's my hope. And I, and I'll stick to our goals that we would absolutely like a full open, but we got to be ready to do it. And I think to start the school year, because it is so new, that it doesn't hurt to phase that piece in. Keeping an eye on the data and coming back in three weeks. And it seems like the medical data around younger kids is more favorable than older kids. So I'm hoping we get to a full open, but I for one am willing to, to wait the three weeks. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry, I missed the end of your thing because I lost my internet.
Oh, well, it wasn't anything brilliant, that's for sure.
Yes, it was.
It was just reiterating the point that phasing in with an eye at the, eye on the data and knowing, at least at this point in time, that the, the students, younger students, their data tends to be more favorable. So hopefully we can move to a full open. But I'm willing to start for the three weeks. I think it's reasonable.
Okay, and I'm, I guess I'm willing to start those three weeks. But at the end of our three weeks, if we're truly going by data and our data is not supporting, I feel like right now we're starting in a hybrid with some of our schools out of fear as opposed to looking at data and trying, and I get the wanting to ease in because introducing this many kids into the school system, I get all the possibilities. But I guess at the end of three weeks, if all of our numbers look good, then I certainly would be pushing to have a full open, not a fear-based, let's stay at a hybrid.
Okay, yes, absolutely. I mean, I personally would agree with that. I'm just going to push back a little. I'm not, I don't think we're starting fear-based at this point. I think we're, we're doing the, let's try it. There's a lot to learn just about routines and protocols and dropping off and picking up and going to lunch and going outside and getting the security and doing the cleaning and all of that. So again, I'm willing to give it the three weeks to get used to it. I don't, I personally don't, I'm not doing it out of fear. But I certainly hear that. I mean, I get that. But I think we're just being cautious and letting people get used to it.
I have many concerns about what I'm hearing too. I, Jen, I have, you know, everybody has their own opinions and feelings about things, but it is not based just on fear. It's the reality of moving almost 1,000 children, little children who are not used to not touching each other, not doing any, you know, not being close to each other. So I think that the reality is this is not something any of us have had to deal with. And I do not think that we're doing this just out of fear. It's a common sense approach to what we're having to navigate as teachers, as educators, and trying to open up a building right now, so.
Which is why I would support it because I feel like you guys are using it as an ease-in. And that's, and that's okay. I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, this is, like, I've been asking, like, we've talked to our teachers and we asked who's coming back and who's not coming back. But I haven't seen clear numbers yet either about how many are coming back and how many are not coming back. Or I know you guys said you didn't really ask about who would come back. Did you not ask who would come back full-time or who would only come back part-time? If we get a hybrid, what was the survey that went out?
Maria can speak to that.
Yeah, so the survey that went out, the most recent survey that went out asked teachers whether they would come back fully, if we just fully opened or whether they would come back in a hybrid. And the reason that we didn't ask for the third option is that that's actually not an option that's available to us right now as the superintendent mentioned earlier, without some sort of special dispensation from the state. So we didn't ask about that because the transmission rates remain low and that's not an option. So, um, we didn't ask about that because the transmission rates remain low and that's not an option that we're able to pursue at this point. So we presented the two other options, which are full opening or hybrid. And at this point, uh, we had 17 teachers respond to, um, that question about, well, we had 17 teachers respond that they may not return. We had eight that said neither option would work and nine that said they wouldn't return for a full opening. They'd return for a hybrid. Open until tomorrow. And so, um, you know, people have until, uh, tomorrow morning to complete it. We, we extended the, uh, the window because of the power outage and we recognized that many people may not have had the opportunity to complete it last week. But we believe that we're close to having, um, the full number of respondents.
Maria, do you know how many you have so far?
The 17. So the, the way that the survey was
Responded.
This, the way that the survey was, um, sent was that people who, only people who were interested in childcare or planned to not return would be responding to it. It wasn't something that everyone had to respond to. It was only if the survey applied to them, which was if they're interested in childcare or if they planned not to return.
Okay. How do we, and were they required to answer? I guess I'm wondering how many people just choose not to respond?
Well, you know, it's possible that people choose not to respond, but staff are going to be back next week. So, you know, we've sent, uh, numerous communications to people about, um, what their options are, what their rights are. Um, we've sent numerous communications asking people to contact me directly if they have questions or would like to talk about, um, their needs. And some people have reached out to me directly and others have responded to the survey. So yes, you're right. It's possible that people won't respond to the survey, but we have work next week. And so it would surprise me if we just had people that didn't come to work. I mean, we have a very, as you've heard me say, um, a number of times, we, and, and as everyone here knows, we have a very professional workforce. We have very committed teachers and paraprofessionals and non-certified staff. We have people that want to come to work and take their jobs very seriously. So I would expect that if anyone was anticipating not returning, they would either contact me or respond to the survey.
And Maria, do you have people who have told you that they are not returning?
Um, we have people who have, as, uh, as the board likely knows, we've had several resignations over the past, um, couple of weeks. We had, uh, three retirements that were announced. And we've had a few people that have reached out to me that are just looking at what their options are. Um, we, we have one person who requested a leave of absence just in the past week. And other than that, we have people who are just still considering their options. Um, I'm going to be reaching out to the respondents who noted that they weren't going to be returning to work to see whether or not that's actually the case, whether they need more information. So at this point, we really only have one staff member besides the three that, um, resigned, that is looking for a leave of absence. I would expect that we may receive some more of those requests this week. But again, staff are going to be back at work next week. And I would be very surprised if, if people didn't reach out to me prior to that, if there were, um, you know, serious concerns on their part about not returning.
And what's the likelihood of filling these spots before school starts? You know, we're now in the final days, final weeks.
Right. Well, I think it depends, you know, on what the positions are. We've posted a number of anticipated openings across subject areas, across the buildings, just, um, to help prepare for the possibility of any resignations or, um, leaves of absence. And so, you know, you look at certain positions that are easier to fill than others. I would say an elementary teaching position typically has more applicants than a high school physics or, or calculus position. So, um, I would say it depends on what the positions are, but we do have anticipated openings posted, uh, that really reflect a wide range of positions across the district, just to help us get ahead of the hiring process if we need to. We're also continuously, um, hiring substitute teachers that could fill in, in a pinch. And as I, um, mentioned at one of the, uh, earlier staff, uh, earlier board meetings, we've also canvassed our staff, our substitutes, our paraprofessionals to see who has certifications in different areas. So we're, we're looking at those things as well if we need them.
And Maria, what about, I think you said there were 30 or 50 students, children who might need childcare? Where are we on that?
Well, we're close. We're actively pursuing, um, offering childcare for staff members within the district. We've been partnering with Wilton Continuing Education to do that. Uh, the next step for us, after noting that we have, uh, considerable interest from staff members was to identify spaces in each of the buildings. We've now done that thanks to the principals who have indicated what spaces might be open within the buildings. And so the next step is to really look at what staffing needs we would have and to begin hiring staff and to solidify what the program would look like. But it is something that we're very interested in pursuing. Uh, it does look like we have interest from a number of staff members across the district. And, uh, we could have as many as about 50 kids participating in that.
And would that cost be covered by the town, the board or the, uh, teachers?
No, that's a cost that would be covered by the staff.
Got it.
That would be funded entirely by staff. Um, and it, it would really just cover the cost of childcare, you know? As we look at, um, the need for social distancing and cohorting, obviously we're going to have to hire more staff than we typically would in that sort of program. And so, you know, that is reflected in the cost. It's, we don't think it's, um, an exorbitant cost, but it's certainly not a low cost. We're looking at about $12 per hour per child. And, uh, as we look into this a little bit more and we solidify the numbers, we'll look to see if there's any way that we can offer a discount for a second or third child for staff members who are in that situation.
So that would be insurance and all that would be taken care of. The, the town would not be paying for any of that?
No, there would not be a cost to the town.
Kevin, I have another question, um, two questions really. So I'm a working parent. If I'm planning ahead for that three weeks from now, what does that look like? Does that look like three weeks from now, we are evaluating and assessing for, uh, you know, making a change to the model in the next three weeks? Or does that make, does that question make sense?
It does. And it's, so it's, uh, it's every three weeks is the, um, is the review cycle. And then there would be, uh, a week to, um, to plan. So actually, if, um, in, in that situation, kind of at the end of week three, we would look at where we are, make a recommendation and then, uh, we would take a week to adjust. And then kind of at the end of that, I guess, fourth, fourth week is when we would, um, implement any change in the plan.
Got it. And, uh, my second question, I have two, one more question after that, but, um, I'm a student and, I mean, I'm in Mrs. So-and-so's class and she does not feel comfortable. Um, you know, we, we've talked a lot about Virgil, this is going to rip the Band-Aid off a little bit. So in the fall or in the spring, we had some students who were getting different spectrums of learning as far as, um, real time learning versus some students getting video learning versus some students having five minute check-ins. If I'm a teacher and I really don't feel comfortable doing live remote learning, can you talk a little bit about that, just so that we can set the expectations for the parents?
I appreciate the question and I think, um, you know, if you go back and look at some of the, um, previous presentations and even some of the information in the early matter of the, um, slide deck I shared, um, you know, it's our, it's our expectation that kids that will be receiving direct instruction. And as we've thought about, you know, what those experiences have been, we're also, um, thinking about, you know, just that the whole instructional unit or the episode of learning, rather than frame them as, um, you know, as we did early on, um, synchronous versus asynchronous. You know, we're trying to think more discreetly about the components of a lesson and then work with our staff about, you know, what are those pieces that absolutely must be, um, live delivered by a teacher? And then even within that, um, if you are in a classroom and you're, you know, working with kids at home, then, you know, what needs to be on the camera, right? Does it need to be the teacher? Does it need to be the whole class? More than likely, if the teacher's delivering, uh, more than likely, um, the teacher would be sharing his or her screen, um, and, you know, whatever matter is in, um, in the unit in SchoolG. Um, and then, you know, speaking over the top of it. So I think, you know, we're, we're trying to, um, to be really, uh, judicious about that, but most importantly, ensuring that, um, you know, kids at home are, um, fully participating in the experience of the lesson. And I think that's something, Mandy, you know, a, as we know, um, across the district, there were, um, there was a, you know, quite a range of differences. And, you know, part of that was born out of, we just didn't know what people's experiences were at home. And so, you know, made a lot of decisions early on about how to, um, to, to provide a, a wide range of latitude. You know, I think the other, um, really key difference here is we're anticipating the fall. We are going to be teaching our curriculum. Students will be participating in, um, assessments. Attendance is going to be taken. Um, there will be expectations for student participation as well as, you know, what's happening, happening in terms of, you know, how the lesson's being delivered. So kids will be, uh, receive grades and feedback. So I think, you know, the, the paradigm is completely shifted based on, um, you know, kind of what I think our experience was, you know, back in the springtime.
So there will be grades, um, at the central level through the high school?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. I just answered that question. And can you talk about, so my child, child A is, is at home. What does it look like? So the expectation is that they are being zoomed live into the classroom? Or is the expectation, it depends on what's being taught? I just, could you break it down really simple? I know you talked about a little bit, but just break it down in a really simple sense. I know Fran has worked with some of the teachers on what this will look like. From a parent perspective, I have a, let's say, fourth grader. What is the expectation from a, just any child who's at home on this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever cohort they're in?
Right. So if you go back to, um, the fourth grade schedule, right? So
Or any grade. I just threw fourth grade out there, but any grade.
Just to illustrate, so if you are, if you are remote learning, um, and, you know, the school schedule starts with a morning meeting, then, you know, you as a student will, uh, log into SchoolG. You will have kind of a series of activities, but the first activity may be a Zoom link to the morning meeting. And you will, um, then zoom into the morning meeting. Um, you'll kind of go through that experience and then you'll move on to the next piece of the day. Um, and so the next piece, if it's a, um, say literacy instruction, you know, there again, you might have, um, a mini lesson where you zoom in and a teacher is, um, providing that direct instruction, um, sharing his or her screen. So, um, students at home can see what the classroom are viewing on the smartboard. Then you might turn into, uh, some partner work or some independent work. Um, and then you may come back to a check-in. So Jen, do you want to, I think, you know, kind of in my mind, that's, that's how it's going to unfold. And I think that's probably accurate for, um, most lessons.
And by the way, Kevin, I was just saying, fourth grade, I meant, it could be 11th grade chemistry. I just was throwing that out there. I didn't, I didn't want that question just to go to Jen. Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I don't mind.
The broader point, uh, students were, were really intending on having students at home pay as fully as
Yeah. Um, so yeah, I mean, that, that's exactly it. So we would be really kind of organized where the direct instruction, the reason we're doing, you know, trying to, um, focus the roles of the three teachers is that one would be geared to kind of gathering and supporting the engagement of the at-home learners while the two other teachers are kind of dividing and conquering the onsite learners. Then you have that moment in time where students are working independently. They're, just like they are in class. They're, you know, being pulled for one-on-one conferencing. They're being pulled for small group instruction. So teachers would be planning that out. They would be pulling kids from, you know, at home. They would be pulling kid, one kid from in school because of the social distancing. And so actually having the hybrid allows you to actually pull groups. So, um, you know, we would be able to then pull groups. You'd be able to do, one teacher might be conferring. Other kids might be reading because they actually have to be reading still. So that would carry on just the way reading, writing, um, and, and math work, lesson plans usually proceed. So
Got it.
Yeah.
All right.
And then the one thing that I think is going to be important is, um, and Fran keeps reminding me, we always do kind of like, but it, it comes naturally is that kind of mid-workshop kind of interruption. And then you kind of, a lot of times bring everybody back together again if it feels important. We're going to try to bring everybody back together again a lot more frequently at the end. Because it's, it's going to be important to bring that kind of at-home and onsite learning community back together again. Where maybe it's not as important to do every time, where I do believe in this learning environment, it will be more important.
Right. I guess, Mandy, the last, the last point I would offer, and it's a, it's a retread from our last meeting. We've engaged, um, a curriculum expert who's been working with schools in places like Hong Kong for the last couple of months. And they're a couple of months ahead of us in terms of the learning models that they've employed. And so she has some, uh, really good, you know, lessons and, um, pitfalls to avoid. And one of the comments she made a couple of weeks ago that really stuck with me as we've been contemplating how best to integrate the kids at home. She said, you know, be careful that you, you don't fall into the, um, kind of fly on the wall approach where kids are just, you know, you're setting up a camera and kids are just dialing into the classroom and watching what's happening. And, you know, I, I think the good news for us is we were never conceiving of that because we really are, prior, our primary aim was to, uh, engage kids at home in, um, you know, good learning, you know, with their teachers side by side with the kids that are in person. But it's a, it's a really important point that we make. And that's why I think it really forced us to really go back and more deeply consider the various elements within a lesson. Um, and so that way, you know, there are good, meaningful activities that will be, you know, independent as well as guided by the teacher. There will be, you know, partner work and what have you, um, as well as the, um, you know, the direct instruction. And so I think, you know, we're going to, we're going to get into this. We've already had, um, a team at the high school work with Fran a week ago to play with this. Fran's got another team coming in from Middlebrook on Wednesday. And, you know, again, there's, there's a lot of unknown here. And I just, you know, as many times as I say it, I'll say it again, you know, we really are going to be relying on everybody, and I mean, everybody, um, to be flexible as we get into this model and as we continue to refine. You know, our commitments are, I think, is clear and explicit about, um, you know, what we're seeking to achieve with our kids. But again, you know, we're asking our teachers to do something that, um, they've never done before and isn't comfortable. And so, you know, we, we have a lot of learning and growing to do here as we, um, really get into this work.
No, I think that's awesome. I just think for everyone listening, the more times we can say that, you know, the spring was a emergent situation. We're trying to plan. We're trying to do this better this year and we have more time. And, and I just think that that's important because I know everyone keeps talking about, I'm going to hire a teacher and have my own cohort because I want to make sure my child is taught because I'm a working parent and I don't have time to sit with my child. Um, I think it's important that we express our goals.
Thanks.
Jen, do you have any thoughts? Go ahead, Mandy.
No, I was just going to say, I wanted to say hi to Brian Fagan and welcome. I didn't mean to catch you off guard, but it's fun to see. Thank you so much for stepping into some big shoes.
They, they are very big shoes indeed. It's an honor to be part of the Wilton Public School community again. And I'll take that opportunity to, uh, just compliment Lauren on the transition that she has provided for me, uh, over a very brief number of days. But she is, and, uh, she has, has been relentless in the most positive sense of communicating the material, um, along with my other colleagues, uh, who are on for this meeting. So thank, thank you for the welcome.
Yeah. Yes, welcome, Brian.
Yeah, welcome. And Brian, no pressure. Four of the board members have kids at Middlebrook, so no pressure.
I wouldn't have it any other way. Along with the superintendent, just in case we
Yes, I didn't want to add that, but yes.
Jen, did you have comments?
I did. Jen, I just have a question for you. We've heard some, from some Middlebrook teachers about the live streaming and whatnot. How is your staff feeling about our at-home kids zooming into our in-school kids?
Cider mill, you mean? Yeah. Um, you know, I think the reality is there's a lot of trepidation about live streaming. I think, I think teaching is a very personal, you know, when you have, when you're making connections with kids, you know, it's a very personal thing. And it's, you know, it's, you could be yourself and, you know, it's, it's, you form a connection and a relationship and a bond. And, you know, when you know that there's somebody watching and listening and even if you're not being critical, um, it's just, it feels different, you know? And no matter how many times I even say, when I walk into a room, just carry on, you know, it's just me, you know, it's just, it, the fact It's just, the fact of the matter is, it's me, and I'm standing there, and, you know, no matter what smile I have on my face, you know, I'm there. And so, it just adds a level of anxiety, you know? And so, you know, it's kind of, that makes it, that makes all of this very difficult. So, it's a challenge, and, you know, I think that, you know, the more that we all are respectful, and I think that Fran and her team, you know, in the district has done a lot of work around, you know, the, the norms and the protocols around how to respect what it means to be online learning. And I think that if we as a community can follow those guidelines and protocols and be respectful of our teachers, then, you know, I think that it could be a win-win situation, you know? Of course, there's anxiety.
Right. Well, we have, we have wonderful teachers and staff, and I know many of them, we've seen their emails. Certainly are, are worried and anxious about the, the live portion. We also, as board members, hear lots from parents who are distrustful that the, the online learning will simply be, you know, just posting assignments and no interaction and no engagement. So, we realize as board members the challenge, and we're putting our faith in both the families who, you know, are skeptical from last spring, and the teachers who are reluctant, because it is, it is a bit of a new world, or quite a bit of a new world. But I think by putting our board goals together, that our curriculum's in place, that the remote learning is not a loss. I'm going to push back on some parents who wrote that in emails. I don't see it that way. I think, given our, the, the talents and the planning that have gone into it so far, I think remote learning, it will not be the same as the classroom necessarily, but it will not be a loss either. You know, the kids will be engaged and they will be learning. And for our teachers, I think we all empathize with the new vista that they have to engage. But the board understands classroom boundaries, and the better that they can be articulated in the acceptable use policies, and know full well that the board will support our faculty there. And I think, again, for the most part, our parents get it. There may be some who don't, but I think, for the most part, they do get it, and they understand privacy and boundaries. And, as I said, the classroom is a, is a magical place, and the, and nobody should intrude on the interaction between the students and the teachers. That's their world. So, that's, you know, we're going to do our best as a board to support the teachers. And I think we've got the right tools, and we are in so much better shape than many districts who don't have the resources, don't have as talented a faculty, don't have the class sizes to work with, have buildings that are much older. There are just some, or are living in places in the country where kids don't have access to the internet on a good day. And then they might be living in a spot that has, you know, much riskier health data than we in Connecticut do. So, I think, all in all, given this pandemic, that we are starting from a good place. You know, obviously, it's in the middle of a pandemic, I get that, but relatively speaking, Wilton, Connecticut's in a good place to be able to, to get to power through this. I'm just going to be really hokey and use a Winston Churchill quote. He says, quote, and I'm going to mangle it for all the history teachers, so I apologize ahead of time. He said during World War II preparations, "Don't argue about the difficulties, the difficulties will argue themselves." So, we are at the point where we are well aware of them, working hard at them. We've got a lot of talent, a lot of goodwill, and our focus is on the kids. So, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Gretchen. Thank you, Mandy. All in favor of the superintendent's recommended hybrid model to start the 2020 school year? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. And congratulations, Dr. Smith, and thank you to your staff for all the thought and care and concern that's gone into this. And all the public that are parents who have hung in with this. I know there are lots of challenges ahead, and the detailed questions that you all must be left with are going to be addressed in the parent forums and the FAQ postings that the superintendent and his team will do. And please keep your input and your, or emails to the Board of Ed, please keep them coming. We appreciate that. So, thank you.
Ask a question.
Yes, of course, Jen.
When are we going to survey our students to see who's coming and who's not coming?
Fair question. Ken, or Kevin? You're on mute, Kevin.
Just waiting for the board to vote. So, that'll go out first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, now they have something that they know, you know, there's something specific. Okay. Lucille, was there any more public comment via email labeled?
Yes, there were. The first comment is from Zach Schiller, 11 Spice Wood Lane. Hello, I've joined the two most recent community Zoom calls pertaining to the school reopening plan, and wanted to inquire about three topics that I don't believe have been covered thus far. Apologies if I am mistaken. Overall, it is clear that the team has done a ton of work, and it is obvious that this is an extraordinarily challenging situation. Nonetheless, I wanted to raise these three topics, topics since it seems important to our community's success and our ability to make it through the year as safely as possible for students and staff. First, as you are probably aware, there are a number of universities that are implementing a monitoring regime for staff and students using pool testing in order to try to detect outbreaks that may occur. They are pulling up, up to around 25 people into a single saliva-based test. If that test comes back positive, then each of the members of the pool are individually tested. It seems to me that this could be done for each of our Wilton cohorts on a regular basis in order to detect an outbreak as early as possible. Below is an article discussing the methodology. Given what we know about coronavirus, it seems to me that this may offer a better ROI than deep cleaning protocols that the district has planned, and he includes a link to the article. Second, it seems there needs to be clearly defined requirements for student and staff masking. While it's clear that there is a requirement, it isn't clear what types of masks will be acceptable. There is a very wide range of mask quality and effectiveness. In some cases, recent testing suggests that certain types of masks are actually a net negative versus wearing nothing at all, the Gator-style ones, for example. Here is a recent study that was done to measure the effectiveness of different types of masks. And again, he includes a link to the article. Finally, can you please provide more information about what, if any, work is being done to enhance the effectiveness of the HVAC systems in the schools? From what I have read, this is going to be critical for safety, especially in older buildings with less advanced HVAC. Are we implementing HEPA filters, increasing the airflow? Have we had anyone study the systems that we have in order to make sure that they are set up in the best possible way for mitigating filtering COVID? Thank you. The next comment is submitted by Lisa Hibbert on behalf of the Wilton High School Factory, uh, Factory Faculty, I'm sorry. Members of the Wilton Board of Education, over 70 members and counting of the Wilton High School faculty are writing to you today to express our concerns regarding the reopening plans presented to you by Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kevin Smith. As ever, we as a faculty are proud to serve the town of Wilton and are fully committed to ensuring not only the educational well-being of our students, but also their health and safety, both physical and mental. In that spirit, we respectfully request that the Board of Education would consider our thoughts regarding the health risks that our students, our faculty, and their families will be exposed to if Wilton chooses to return to in-person classes this fall. At the Board of Education meeting on July 30th, 2020, Dr. Smith and other members of the district's administration reported to you on the status of Wilton's school reopening plans, which include options that range from a full reopening for 100% in-person instruction, a 2-1-2 hybrid model that blends in-person and remote e-learning, and a 100% remote e-learning plan. The existence of these plans was acknowledged but not fully discussed during a video conference with the Wilton High School Factor, Faculty, and staff held by Dr. Smith earlier in the afternoon of July 30th. That evening, Board of Education Chair Deborah Lowe posed the following question after hearing the details of the 2-1-2 hybrid model. I would be curious as to how much staff discussions were involved in coming to the 2-1-2 model. That would be crucial to me, knowing where staff is coming from. Dr. Smith responded with the following. Various administrators at their building had talked about this, so I'll defer to them. I will say, when I was on with three of the four faculties today, we did discuss this model. It wasn't a conversation around whether they thought this model was preferable to another model, but with respect to this as a hybrid comp, as a hybrid concept. I don't think I heard any objection to this approach, and the theory around it is pretty much what was described in the presentation to the board. While it is true that Dr. Smith did not receive any significant pushback from the faculty and staff of Wilton High School regarding the 2-1-2 hybrid model, it is not because we support the model itself. It is because the model was never discussed in any detail at said meeting for one simple reason. We have grave concerns regarding the implementation of any plan that involves a return to in-person instruction rather than a continuation of fully remote e-learning. And the discussion that afternoon focused on those concerns rather than the specifics of the 2-1-2 hybrid model. Throughout this meeting, numerous participants voiced following concerns regarding threats to the health of WH students, faculty, and their families if Wilton Public Schools were to reopen for in-person instruction this fall. Many members of our school community, including both faculty and students, are at increased risk of illness or death if exposed to COVID-19, or have family members who are themselves in an at-risk situation. When Anthony was truly willing to put our faculty in the position of having to make a choice between their livelihood and the health and safety of themselves and their families at his 30th, July 30th meeting with a WHS faculty, Dr. Smith gave the troubling response that he expects some teachers will have to make a tough decision in the coming weeks about their career with Wilton Public Schools. A plan that involves in-person instruction in a full or in a hybrid model with reduced student attendance would not be able to guarantee the adequate maintenance of social distancing guidelines as established by the Centers for Disease Control. The school reopening guidelines issued by the state of Connecticut, Connecticut earlier this summer, amazingly enough, concede the point that social distancing in schools may be difficult or impossible, despite Governor Lamont's and Commissioner Perdon's desire to see schools reopen for in-person learning. Despite the efforts of our outstanding custodial staff, no amount of cleaning and disinfecting will adequately reduce the threat posed by airborne virus particles in our schools. In an article published on July 6, 2020, The New York Times reported that scientific studies indicate the coronavirus could stay aloft for hours in tiny droplets in stagnant air. And that in an open letter to the World Health Organization, more than 200 experts recommended that people should consider minimizing time indoors with people outside of their families. It would be impossible for the district to control whether or not students and their families are exposed to COVID-19 outside of school hours. And there is no mechanism in place for screening students and staff prior to entering school facilities each day, nor any mechanism for providing contact tracing and rapid result testing in the event that suspected cases of COVID-19 compromise the school population. Remote e-learning presents a safe alternative to in-person teaching. Although e-learning is not a perfect alternative to in-person teaching, the faculty and staff of Wilton High School is more than capable of making it work, and more than willing to continue the diligent efforts we began under emergency circumstances this past spring, to ensure that e-learning continues to be a valuable and rewarding experience for our students. Most importantly, it would help safeguard the health of our students and faculty by ensuring that the educational process continues in a manner that presents the lowest possible risk. Each of the above points was raised by members of the Wilton High School's faculty clearly and unequivocally throughout the meeting held by Dr. Smith on July 30th, prior to his presentation to the Board of Ed. Our group of over 70 members and counting of the Wilton High School faculty in no way supports a plan that would compromise the health of our students, our families, our colleagues, or ourselves. Given this situation facing, facing our nation and the ongoing threat of COVID-19, including the increasing community spread and rising cases within the town of Wilton itself, we believe that the Wilton Board of Education must not support the idea of placing the health of our community at risk when a safe, viable alternative is readily deployable in the form of a robust e-learning plan. Thank you very much for your time and your thoughtful consideration. Sincerely concerned members of the Wilton, of the faculty of Wilton High School. And there is one more public comment. And the comment is from Ms. Ms. Lewis. Dr. Smith mentioned the hybrid model is able to accommodate students to remain six feet apart as per CDC guidelines. This was mentioned again on Slide 3 of the hybrid overview that it will allow for six feet of social distancing. Passing time was not mentioned in the details of the schedule at WHS. Does that statement include passing times at the high school? If so, please provide details. If six feet distance in the plan does not include passing times, will that be addressed prior to allowing students in the school under the hybrid model? And that is it for public comments.
Okay. Thank you, Lucille. As with all public comment, I'll say it again, the board does not directly engage. Instead, there is appropriate individual follow-up. I will just state again that all these plans are put together with the health and safety of staff and students at the forefront. Okay, we have a meeting scheduled for next week. Kevin, we need to meet a week from now? Okay. I know you're on mute, but I'll take your, your nodding as yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. So, let's plan to meet next week at, well, usually seven, but we'll see board members' availability and staff as well. All right. So, we have concluded this evening's agenda. So, this meeting is, is adjourned, and I want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart in terms of all the staff and all the parents that have hung in there and all the teachers. Yes, we're nervous, but I feel we're going to be able to do this. So, thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.